Members other than the chair serve without compensation. We're joined here today by Andrea Bierstein, who has been nominated by the mayor on the recommendation of the Manhattan delegation to the New York City Council. If appointed to the TLC, she will serve the remainder of a seven-year term to expire on January 31st, 2029. Thank you for being here today. If you can, please raise your right hand to be sworn in.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and in answer to all council member questions?
Thank you. Oh, please, can you turn your mic on?
Is that on now?
It's on. You say, just.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the committee and in answer to all council member questions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You are recognized to give an opening statement.
Good morning, Chair Powers and council members. My name is Andrea Bierstein, and I come before you today seeking your confirmation and consent to serve as a member of the Taxi and Limousine Commission. Thank you in advance for your consideration and for the opportunity to tell you about myself and why I wish to serve on the TLC. I'm a lawyer in private practice representing individuals and municipal governments in a variety of litigation against corporate malefactors. I've spent the past six years working specifically on opioid litigation, lawsuits against manufacturers, distributors, and dispensers of prescription opioids on behalf of municipalities around the country, seeking recovery for the public nuisance these companies have created. Among the clients I've been privileged to represent in this litigation has been the city of New York, and I'm proud that my firm and I have recovered hundreds of millions of dollars for our city to help combat the opioid epidemic. I'm now working part-time for my firm, which has freed up time for me to give back to the city that has given so much to me. Before I was an opioid lawyer, and even before I became a lawyer, I fell in love with New York City and in particular with New York City transportation. I grew up in suburban New Jersey, graduated from Princeton University, and moved to Brooklyn in 1980, two years after graduating from college. As soon as I moved to the city, I knew I had found my home, and I have lived here ever since, except for a brief sojourn in Massachusetts while I was teaching law school. During my years in the city, I've lived in Brooklyn and in Queens, but from 1985 to 1992, and then since my return from Massachusetts in 1996, I've lived in Manhattan, first in Greenwich Village, and since 1996 on the Upper East Side. I attended NYU for law school, the only law school I applied to because having so recently arrived in New York City, I couldn't bear the thought of leaving and to live anywhere else to go to law school. After law school, my husband and I remained in the city where I've worked at a number of law firms, and for the past 21 years have been a partner at a firm now known as Simmons Hanley Conroy. When I joined in 2003, Hanley and Conroy was a small New York City-based law firm. Our only office was in Midtown Manhattan. 10 years ago, however, we merged with a larger Midwest-based Simmons firm, and the merged firm's headquarters is in Illinois outside St. Louis. But my New York partners and I have remained in the same Midtown office space we took years ago, giving our firm a vibrant and important New York City presence. So although technically I work for a firm that's headquartered in Illinois, I think of myself as working for a New York law firm. When I first came to the city, it was the subways that caught my attention. Then, in my early years of practice as a lawyer, I delved deeply into the city's bus system when I represented the New York City Transit Authority suing a manufacturer over defective buses. Over the years, however, I've come to see the city's transportation infrastructure as a whole. The sidewalks, subways, buses, commuter trains, yellow and green taxis, the old black cars, and now the app-based for hire vehicles, each one an important component in how New York City keeps people moving around our great city. To me, New York City is first and foremost about walking, a place where you don't have to get in a car to get around, where you can walk the streets and see the diversity of the city on display every day. But of course, you can't walk everywhere. Our city is too big and too varied for that. In a city with our density, public transportation is also key. We can't always be each in our own cars, whether or not we're the ones driving them. But even public transportation isn't sufficient. Sometimes a car is the right solution for reasons of distance, or time of night, or accessibility, or because of the need to transport stuff. When you need a car, a for-hire vehicle of some kind is a crucial component of our transportation infrastructure. I welcome the opportunity to be part of the agency overseeing the for-hire vehicle component of our transportation system and to serve the city and its transportation needs in this way. I bring to this position 40 years of legal experience, including, as noted, representation of the city, as well as earlier representation of the Transit Authority, and I look forward to using my professional and personal experience in the service of the city and the riders who use taxis and other for-hire vehicles. And I hope you'll see my candidacy as a valuable asset to the TLC, and I look forward to answering your questions. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on the opioid issue, very, very important. I'm going to do a few questions, and I'll hand it over to colleagues here. As I noted earlier, there are five members of the TLC recommended by the mayor and five by the five borough delegations in New York City Council, including the Manhattan delegation, who has recommended you. I just wanted to clarify, in your pre-hearing questions you wrote, you were initially referred to a candidate as a candidate for appointment by Tanya Genarett, who is the chief strategy officer for the first deputy mayor. I have you as a Manhattan delegation nomination. Could you just clarify that route to the nomination here? Because I...
Sure. So Tanya originally recommended me. Tanya and I had worked together on the opioid litigation when she was at the Law Department. She was one of the principal client contacts that we had for the city of New York, and she had originally recommended me. But I think over the course of looking at that process, the mayor's office had additional candidates, and the Manhattan delegation didn't have a Manhattan candidate that they had identified. And so at some point, it was decided in the mayor's office that it would make more sense for me to be nominated by the Manhattan delegation, and the mayor's office would use their slot for someone else. And so the Manhattan delegation considered me and then voted to put my name forward. And I suppose, in terms of answering the question I may not have understood, that you were looking for which of those recommendation slots rather than the beginning of the process.
I understand. Okay. I appreciate that clarification. You have a extensive legal career, including working both on the Transit Authority, as you noted, and also working on behalf of the city of New York. Folks come here from different backgrounds. Some come with a legal background, some come with a, many come with a transportation background, and particularly obviously to transportation agency. Can you talk to us a bit about your resume and experience, and how you think that makes you qualified to be on the TLC versus another agency that obviously you have a qualification to be appointed to? And what you see as, you know, as from your legal career being qualifications to make you be on the TLC?
So I would say that part of my qualifications to be on the TLC doesn't come from my legal career, it comes from being a New York City resident and a user of the taxi and limousine system, and also this longstanding interest that I've had in transportation and in the role of the whole transit infrastructure as a whole. But I do think that my legal career is an asset, and an important one, in my qualifications because one of the things that I have done throughout my legal career is each time, as what I have done as a lawyer is to be a litigator, and each time you take a new case, you learn a new industry. It's not like there are lawyers who specialize in very specific things and they do the same area all the time. Say if you're a real estate lawyer, you know a lot about real estate. Litigators are generalists. We know procedure, we know the court system, we know how to do what we do. But each time we do a case, we delve into a new industry. So when I represented the Transit Authority all those years ago, had to learn an awful lot about buses and how they work and how they're built and how they're designed. When I did the opioid litigation, I learned an enormous amount about the opioid industry and the companies and how the drugs work. And so I think that the, my experience in taking up a new task in a new industry and mastering that so that you can really understand the details from the inside, which has been absolutely critical to what I've done as a lawyer. When I take those skills and marry them to the interests that I've always had in transportation, I think that's how my legal career really informs my qualifications.
Okay. Thank you for that. And as you know, as a New Yorker, you also have a experience here with the variety of transportation services in the city, I would assume, including the yellow taxi industry and the for-hire vehicles. We have seen a myriad of issues over the last few years when it comes to the emergence of new technologies and new, essentially new industries, replacing old industries and also supplementing them. But from your experience as an appointee to the TLC, what do you see as the largest issues in the taxi and for-hire vehicle space at this particular moment?
I'm sorry, I missed part of that. What do I see as...
What do you see as the most important and critical issues right now when it comes to the TLC?
I mean, I think that the TLC, I think the critical issues overall are really, to some extent, what they always have been in terms of its mission, which is to keep for-hire vehicles safe, available, and to promote driver well-being, and to reduce the environmental impact of cars on the city and reducing congestion. But I think some of the challenges that the city, that the TLC faces in doing that over the past several years have involved integrating the ride-hailing apps into a system because that's had a big impact on, on the one hand, an impact on availability, but in another hand, an impact on driver well-being of the, of the medallion drivers. So I think that, I think the TLC has done a great job of addressing that challenge, but continues to need to do that. I think the same is true with reducing environmental impact of the, of cars, and both for-hire vehicles, but of cars generally, because I think encouraging people to use taxis is one way to get them to leave their cars at home. So I think being involved in both the issues of congestion and pollution, that is the focus on, on electric vehicles, are also issues right now that the city will have to deal with.
Thanks.
That's the TLC, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm going to, one more question, then hand it over to colleagues. Yesterday, we saw the final, the MTA vote on congestion pricing. I know you have made some, I think, notes on that in your, in your pre-hearing responses, but obviously, one of the big issues that was being discussed is whether yellow taxis and perhaps for-hire vehicles should be charged a fee for entering the zone and where their classification exists. Do you have an opinion on that, or whether yellow taxis for hire vehicles should have been, should be charged for entering the congestion pricing zone?
I think that it makes sense at the present moment for those cars to be exempt from congestion pricing. It may be that in the long run, that may not work out, but I think in the beginning, as part of the transition, to the extent that you need to encourage people to leave their cars at home, keeping the taxis a little bit more affordable for the time being may help with that transition. So I think as an initial step, I also think it's the drivers of yellow taxis in particular have been under so much economic stress that, to the extent that that pricing reduces demand for them and makes their livelihoods harder, I think that would be problematic. So I do support, I do think that an exemption, at least in the short term, but I think, and I think you saw this in my written answers, I think on so many issues, these are dynamic situations that need to be revisited periodically, and an exemption now doesn't mean an exemption forever, but I do think it's important to have that now.
Yeah. Thank you. We're going to go to colleagues. We'll start with Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Thank you, and thank you for being here today. So I have a couple of questions. I wish we had the opportunity to have met before today. The first set of questions is just really for clarification in some of the, some of your submission. So I'm not clear in terms of your current status as to whether or not you are employed or retired, because it speaks to you being retired, but I think you mentioned you are part-time now.
I am part-time. I am still employed. I don't work full-time at my law firm, but I am still employed by the firm.
Okay, because I think you submitted that you were retired in your submission. And it speaks to something about having an interest in the response that you got back, I think, from COIB in terms of your ownership interest. Can you explain what ownership interest you have in your company?
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm a partner in the law firm, so as a partner, that means that I have an, that I, that I'm partly an owner of it. And so the, when, when the Conflicts Board looked at that, what they were saying is that sometimes a law firm partner might retire, but might retain a partnership share so that, for example, I might be entitled to ongoing fees even if I were fully retired. So that's what they were focusing on, that even if I stopped working and I stopped drawing a salary, if I continue to have an economic ownership interest where I'd be entitled to a share of the profits, that the same requirements about recusing myself would still apply.
And so as it pertains to the need to recuse yourself, if you have ownership in the company, would it mean that it is a broader stroke in terms of where you need to recuse yourself from, since you have ownership in the actual company, not just limiting you to cases? Because I think it speaks to cases, but if you have ownership in the company?
Well, what the, what the board had said was that if any of the firm's clients were to come before the TLC, so that would be not, not necessarily just my clients, there would be a potential need to recuse myself, but they did say that if it were not my client, that I should consult with them for further guidance. So at any time, if any, because I have an ownership interest in the firm, if any of our clients had anything before the TLC, I would need first thing to notify COIB if it were not my client to get further guidance, and if it was my client, I would have to, I would know that I would need to accuse myself, and you know, that would be, that would be clear.
And have you or your firm had any cases where they had to litigate that had any connection to TLC?
No. It's not, it's actually, it would be very unlikely that we would. It's not the kind of work that we do. But obviously, you could never rule it out, which is why it was good to get guidance from COIB, but we have not.
And have you had any litigation pertaining to congestion pricing?
No, we have not.
I know you said that your connection to transportation has been as a user, and you've had a longtime interest in the transportation space. Can you share with the committee how you've advocated through the years on behalf of drivers?
Well, I haven't had an opportunity to advocate for, for drivers. I have not been in a position, I have not been in a position to do that.
And just my final set of questions is focusing on congestion pricing, just kind of picking up where the chair was on that. And I know you spoke to your belief that in the short time, in the short term, that an exemption would be something that you would support as it pertains to taxis and for-hire vehicles. Can you explain that a bit more? Are you aware that they currently have a tax that they pay into currently?
Yes, I am aware. For one thing, because I, because when I ride in them, every time I, you know, cross those limits and the, and the meter pops up. But I think the concern was that the new, the newer congestion pricing, which I fully support, I'm a big fan of the idea of reducing cars in the most congested parts of Manhattan, would be even more expensive and even more of a burden, and might impede the attempt to convince people to leave their cars somewhere else, whereas if they were comfortable that they, that taxis would be available and that the rates would not be so prohibitively high. And I mean, and I do think to the extent that, you know, this, to some extent touches on driver well-being as well, that taxi fares and the driver's share need to keep pace and be raised sufficiently often to assure that drivers are, are able to earn a living wage. To the extent that you have additional pricing that doesn't necessarily benefit that, it may make it harder to achieve the, the dual goals of both getting people to leave their cars behind so that they can ride in a taxi that's sufficiently affordable that they won't bring their own car, but costs enough that it can compensate a driver who can earn a living doing it. And I'm not sure that congestion pricing, pricing right at this moment, applied to those taxis, is the best way to accomplish that balance, but I think that may change.
And the last question I have really is, first, a statement. The taxi industry has really been underwater. We've seen a significant impact and financial burden on drivers. Several years ago, there were drivers that committed suicide because of the strain and the financial stress that they experienced. New York City has since invested millions of dollars to try and support the industry. And, you know, there is a risk that without exempting the, the drivers in congestion pricing, what that impact as a result could very well be. How can the TLC support taxis and/or for-hire vehicles as the new congestion charge comes into effect?
Well, I think that to support taxis, other than through an exemption, which obviously is not within their control, would be to continue to monitor the fares and the driver's share, and making sure that drivers continue to, to be able to earn, to earn enough money. And if the demand for taxis doesn't keep up, you know, if it declines or doesn't keep up or doesn't increase so that the drivers aren't able to earn a living, I think the TLC has a number of tools at its disposal to be looking at matching, you know, the, the number of available cars to the demand, looking at, at pricing. And I think that the, that the congestion pricing is just another variable to consider in the tools that the TLC already uses as it analyzes every year, the number of vehicles, the amount of money that drivers make, where the fares are, where the congestion is. And this just becomes another factor that the TLC would have to take into account. And I look forward to working with both experts and stakeholders and my colleagues at the TLC to make sure that we get the right balance with congestion pricing as a factor as well.
Thank you for your response. I would just like to emphasize that should you be appointed, that it is important to have members of the commission, one, that understands the regulatory side of things, which I have no doubt that you would be able to take that on as an attorney, but also take into account the climate of the industry, the drivers, and what that impact is. At myself, as the Chair of Transportation Infrastructure, I hear often from the drivers directly and the, the challenges that they are facing, and the need for them to have someone on the commission that understands that and that will advocate and champion for the TLC drivers as policies and what have you change. And the last thing I would also like to note is, do you support street hails by commuter vans?
So before I turn to that, I would say that in terms of the, of driver issues, I do want to assure you that from my perspective, the drivers and driver welfare are absolutely key to the for-hire vehicle industry, because without the drivers, there is no industry. And so I just want to assure you that...
And the passengers too, because if the price is put onto the passenger, they're not going to get into the taxi cabs either, because as you say, when you go into a certain zone, you see it pop up.
Yeah.
It's going to pop up even higher with this new tax for them.
Yeah. No, it's, I mean, look, there, there are a lot of issues in terms of balancing that. In terms of the hailing of the commuter vans, that's an issue where I would really need to learn more, both from the experts and the stakeholders, to have a definitive position on that. I'm less familiar with that aspect of the industry than really with any of the other pieces of it, and I do know something about the commuter vans and the spot that they fill in certain parts of the city that are, you know, beyond the subway system and that people, you know, rely on those. But I would need to learn a lot more about that and, and consult with others before I could form a definitive position on it.
Absolutely. I encourage you to speak with the commuter van coalition that exists to understand the challenges that they face, because similar to the taxi and for-hire vehicles, they too have been underwater for quite some time as well. They are critical to communities like southeast Queens, parts of Brooklyn, especially connecting commuters to subway infrastructure to be able to get in and around New York City. And it's a very important issue and industry for myself as well. And so thank you for your responses. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Without going to Councilmember Bierstein.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, good morning. When you spoke to Ms. Genarett about the possibility of being a TLC commissioner, did, did you folks discuss the possibility of being appointed to any other boards, or was the conversation solely surrounded around the TLC?
We did talk about other boards, and we talked about what my areas of interest would be, because I think, based on our work together, I think Tanya thought I had a lot to contribute to the city. And so we did talk about what boards might be, or commissions might be suitable, but I think we focused fairly early on the TLC because I do have this interest in transportation. It was always something that had not been, it had not been a part of my professional life since my representation of the Transit Authority in the 80s, but it was something that I was very interested in. And so I think we focused relatively quickly on that and did not pursue any other ideas.
Thank you for that clarification. And then just some questions around for-our vehicles and our apps. Uber has been a force in New York City for about 10 years now. Their aggressive pricing and market saturation have only made owning a taxi medallion an enormous liability for many people here in the city. At the same time, unlike yellow cabs, they have the ability to close their user accounts without citing anything more than a generalized violation of terms of service. So what obligations do you believe ride-hail apps like Uber have to provide access to TLC licensed rides to all New Yorkers who can afford them?
I'm sorry, could you repeat? I didn't hear the last...
Sure. What obligations do you believe ride-hail apps like Uber have to provide, have to provide access to TLC licensed rides to all New Yorkers who can afford them?
Well, I, I think that, you know, my understanding is that the goal and what the, what the TLC has been working towards is that the ride-hailing apps like Uber and Lyft should be subject to, you know, in, in most areas, all of the same regulation and obligations as, as the yellow taxis. And the idea is that everyone's providing the same service, even if the ways you're hailing them may be changing, and that those things shouldn't affect safety. I do think, though, that what you would be looking at is looking at the system overall. That is, in terms of providing transportation options for everyone, it may be that different options work for different people at different times. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't isolate Uber and Lyft and say, well, what obligation do they have? I think it's part of the TLC's obligation and mission to look at that question as a whole and make sure that some appropriate, that there are appropriate for-hire vehicle options for different scenarios. And obviously, it's critical to make sure that Uber and Lyft don't destroy the health of an industry that, you know, was built for so long in New York and worked so well in New York for so long, and to make sure that that doesn't undermine it. But I'm not sure that, that, that necessarily means, you know, applying every obligation in exactly the same way in, in every situation. And I think I would need to look at that.
Wouldn't you say the scenarios are a bit different, right? Medallion owner, owners or renters of medallions have a different ability in terms of regulations or mandating those two situations that they're in as drivers versus an app that can, a complaint can come in from a consumer, and they have the decision-making power to say, you no longer can have a for-hire vehicle?
I think that even if the companies have their own way of dealing with complaints, I think it would be an issue I would be interested in looking at and learning about at the TLC in terms of what authority the TLC has to deal with complaints. in terms of what authority the TLC has to deal with complaints that come through the apps, rather than through the medallion cabs. But it's not something that I am -- that I'm familiar enough with today to say exactly how that should come out, but I do think it would be an important issue to consider.
Great. I encourage you to reach out to a bunch of the for-hire vehicle groups and coalitions that are out there. This is something that is important to them, and I think that comes up quite a bit. Do you believe that rideshare apps, who connect users with TLC licensed drivers, should have the ability to refuse to provide service to anyone without warning, notice, or an opportunity to appeal?
I'm not sure of the context of that, because I didn't think, really, that any of the drivers, whether medallion or the apps, had the right to refuse service to people. And I would be surprised to learn that they did, and I would certainly want to understand what would be the basis for allowing them to do that.
Yeah, I think, from our experiences with -- from at least what we hear from drivers and workers, the apps, at any point, can just terminate an account. And so, again, I encourage you to look a little bit more into that, just to get--
I mean, what I would add to that is that I do know that, before the existence of the apps, a lot of people of color in the city would have trouble getting medallion cabs, because those cabs would refuse service to them. And I have certainly heard people say that the great thing about the apps is they show up, because they don't have the chance to just drive by you and get a peek before they decide if they want to stop for you. So, if it's come back through the back door of a way of them denying service, I would certainly want to look into that, because I know it was an issue that plagued the yellow cab side of it for a long time, and was something that I think was obviously contrary to TLC rules, and something that, you know, people in the city wanted to do something about, but was always a challenge, and I would not want to see it reappear in the apps, which seem to provide relief to the very people who are having trouble getting a taxi to stop for them.
I appreciate that response. My next question was going to be, as TLC commissioner, what would you do to make sure that rideshare apps like Uber and Lyft don't arbitrarily deny New Yorkers the ability to hail a ride? But if you would like to add a little bit more to the explanation you just gave--
Um, I don't know that I have anything more to add to what I said. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to know, we've been joined by Councilmember Salamanca. Do we have any other colleagues with questions? Seeing none, you may go. Congratulations, again, on your appointment, and thanks for your testimony. You're free to go. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're now open up the floor to the public for comments. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, you can fill out an appearance card to Sergeant Arms and wait to be recognized. Don't believe we have any appearance cards received. We'll check online quickly. I don't think we have any online either. So, seeing none, we will now close the hearing. I'd like to thank, again, the nominees and members of the public, speaker, my colleagues on the committee, committee counsel, and staff, and the Sergeant Arms. This meeting is hereby adjourned.